All right, we have, we are reconvening from closed session and we have nothing to report, so we will adjourn this special meeting at 6:05 PM. I'd like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 28th, 2023. It is 6:05 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replay is on Saturday, June 30th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, July 2nd at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.ekelgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card that are the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and assisting will be our Vice Mayor.
(Inaudible)
Next up, please join me for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, clerk.
Under Section 3 for the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And that one item is Item 4.1, the Civic Summer Presentation.
All right. I'd like to call up Mr. Garcia, Carlos Garcia, are you here? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On the behalf of Elk Grove Civic Summer, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude for your valuable time over the past two weeks. My name is Batanero Batushig. I'm an incoming senior from Laguna Creek High School and a proud member of the Computer Science Pathway. Go Cardinals! As a child, I've always moved around originating from the small, small country of Mongolia to the busy streets of Japan. Through all this, I've always wondered what it was like to be in a small, quiet, and peaceful city. Fortunately, when I arrived to the States with my parents and younger sister, I discovered just that. The Elk Grove Civic Summer, consisting of a two-week seminar and a three-week internship, has been an eye-opening journey. I've gained profound insights into our city, including the incredible behind-the-scenes figures such as Jody Moreno, who tirelessly organizes events in Elk Grove, to learning priceless lessons like learning that our network is our net worth. Without any support from the speakers, including our amazing council members, who generously dedicate their time to educate us, this program would cease to exist. So with that, I want to say again, on the behalf of Elk Grove Civic Summer, we wholeheartedly thank you for this opportunity. I now hand it off to the next representative.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rafael Bassis, a rising senior at Franklin High School. Go Wildcats! Everyone in these chambers wants a better future. We all want a city that represents and listens to the people. We all want our youth to feel heard and empowered. Civic Summer is just one of the many ways that our city has fought to accomplish these goals. We've learned about details of the democratic process, future career opportunities, and fundamental leadership skills. I'll forever remember Kevin's speech about the power of just saying hello and the impact that simple act can have on the lives of other people. I thank you all for your support. You've given us an invaluable opportunity, and I thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mayor Atwal, and I'm a rising senior at Franklin High School. Thank you all for taking the time to give us this amazing chance to connect with the city we live in. Although Elk Grove Civic Summer has been more than just an opportunity to network and consider careers and public service. By speaking to the actual professionals who make Elk Grove a city to be proud of, the youth gets connected with its inner workings, setting our next generation up for success. A generation that works for the people. Various speakers have often said, "I wish I had this when I was your age." Just as you said, Councilman Brewer, it's pivotal for the well-rounded citizen. I've never felt so lucky to be involved in such a unique program at this early stage in my life. So once again, thank you. Thank you for watering the seeds of success and altruism for this new generation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Sonia Shaheen, an upcoming senior at Sheldon High School. Go Huskies! My parents are immigrants who moved here from Afghanistan to provide a better education for my siblings and I. I want to sincerely thank you for providing opportunities like the Civic Summer internship for students like myself to step closer to their goals and dreams. So far, in the short time I have been with this program, I've learned to be the first follower and get out of my comfort zone. I've built great connections with inspiring speakers and peers. I would like to thank you, I would like to thank the city and all the individuals that have allowed for this program to progress. Thank you for your time and idmubodak to anyone that is celebrating today. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Pratham Rangola, and I'm a rising junior at Franklin High School. I just want to express my sincere gratitude to the city council and the city of Elk Grove for their wonderful support towards our program. I'm incredibly grateful to have been selected for this program, and I've really had my eyes open to some new perspectives on personal and professional life through the numerous guest speakers. Before this program, I hadn't even considered all the planning and all the departments that help make our city function. Councilmember Spees, I also wanted to give a special thanks to your advice-filled speech, which really stood out to me because of how genuine and thoughtful it was. But really, thank you to everyone here who did present for us, who made this program as successful as it was. I'll now hand it off to the final representative.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am our final speaker, and my name is Gianna Orhu, and I am an incoming junior at Monterey Trail High School. Go Mustangs! In just the span of just two weeks so far, I have met people like our mayor, city council members, manager, fire, and police chiefs, and many more that I would never have pictured myself even shaking hands with. From you, I have learned that life is all about building relationships, connections, and having the desire to open up the doors of civic engagement to everyone. From you, Madam Mayor, we learned the importance of not leaving it to anyone else and using our voices to speak up and advocate for the issues that we care about and impact the quality of life in our community. On behalf of all of the students of the Elk Grove Civic Summer Program, thank you for making opportunities like these possible for the youth of our city. As we truly are the leader, as we truly are the future leaders of this great city, I look forward to the positive impacts we'll be making together and the bright future of the city of Elk Grove. Thank you, Council, for your continued support. Good night.
Wow, our future is bright. These dynamic students are everything. Had a wonderful opportunity to meet with you all earlier this morning. Mr. Garcia, did you want to provide any concluding remarks?
Just another grade year, you're on, and we've got 46 of yours. It's our biggest program ever, so.
Congratulations. Did you hear that? The biggest program. I'm just incredibly proud of each and every one of you. This is probably my favorite class. You were very engaged. We conducted some wonderful exercises this morning, going through a legislative process of which we had a fun little item that we worked on of renaming our city in honor of Teacher Garcia, maybe calling it Garcia Town. And we went through what the legislative process looks like, and it was something relevant in real time, because as we know, just very recently, two schools in the city of Sacramento are rebranding, renaming their schools. And we went through what the pros and cons are and what sort of the thought process is when we rename something. So it was a fun little exercise, and everybody was engaged. It was a lot of fun. And just your eagerness to learn and grow is quite remarkable, and I'm just so proud of all of you. Thank you. Any of my colleagues want to say anything? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I appreciate your feedback. I was very touched by it. And normally, I would, I would just let it go, but those of you are the class that I was speaking to the other day, I told you that my concern, right, is about an increase of violence in our society overall. And since that day, I want to let you know that a friend of mine's son was killed in South Sacramento. And so, to me, my message has become more important, and I would like to give it again very quickly for everyone. And that really comes down to, if you haven't heard of what a first follower is, a first follower is someone who believes in something important and carries on what that leader is doing. And one of the things that I impel, or I ask them to do, three things. To be an ambassador to what we're talking about by first saying hello. I believe that many of the people who are violent in this world are sadly because they're marginalized, and that is a very scary thing. So when you see someone, or when you see anyone, if you can, please say hello at a minimum, but if you know their name, please say their name and say it correctly, because as we talked about, it means something important when someone hears their name said correctly. The second part is give grace. We all, we all make mistakes. We all say stupid things. We all, we don't do it out of spite necessarily. So I'm asking that you give grace. And the last thing is listen. Please listen to people. They will tell you how they feel if they have trust in you because you've listened to them and you've given them grace. It makes me very sad to know that our, to feel as though our society has grown more violent. But I think that by going back to the beginning, by treating people with respect regardless of their differences, I think we can get a lot further in this world. So thank you very much for allowing me your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Beautiful words.
Yeah.
And I believe, did the class want to do a picture in the front as, yes, Darren?
Just very quickly, my condolences, Vice Mayor, to your loss. But to the students, you know, every year, I think that each class gets more engaging. I, for my own, I've noticed that the first years, trying to get students to ask questions and get engaged was a bit more challenging, and this year, all of you were just throwing questions out there nonstop, and we really like to see that because that shows, gauges your interest in the program. And so, in addition to being the largest class in the history of the program, I think you're also the most engaging class. So kudos to all of you for, again, for taking the time out of your schedules in summer to learn about how cities work. So, thanks again.
Councilmember Brewer?
This was, this was my first experience with the Civic Summer and with this class. It was very, it was amazing, especially considering that myself and Councilmember Robles were tag teaming on this. And I really appreciated the exchange that we had, because I know in the beginning, people were a little, little fatigued from the last session, looking forward to lunch. And I really appreciated talking about and sharing my experience and how I, how I got to the city council and, and sharing some of my past experiences on the CSD Board and Rafael clearly knowing my experience with the Soapbox Derby and being able to share that with you. But like I said, as we were rounding out our discussion yesterday, is making sure that no matter what you do in any profession, all roads come back to government, and you will always have a place here in Elk Grove. But also, also, as I imparted with you, it's like, make sure as you exchange with people, make sure you have, make sure you have your name, your word is your bond, because you always want to make sure that you are fully representative not only of yourself, but of your family. And on top of that, staying true to yourself and being centered. Those three things will keep you very far in life, and those are very, very important because whether it be lobbying, whether it be politics in government, whether it be in the science field, or law, or medical, any profession that you're in, it's like, you always want to make sure that those three things you keep near and dear to you because those are the things that carry you far and have, and have you a long career, a long fruitful career, but also gives you the flexibility that you want to chart your own course. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before you yesterday. Greatly appreciate it, and I hope you enjoyed your lunch. And for those who guessed my name wrong, thank you.
Name or age?
No. Because the age part, some of you, I was about to get your, I was about to take your lunch right back.
Counselmember Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everyone from Laguna Creek, can you guys raise your hand? Franklin High School? Sheldon? Valley High? Florin? Monterey Trail? All right.
Consumers Oaks? There's more.
Consumers, I'm, I'm keeping, Consumers? All right, I think that's it, right?
Sheldon?
I thought I said.
Florin.
I thought I said all.
I'm on the school board.
Keep on going. No, but that's, you know, it's, as a lookout, we see a representation of our city, we see a representation of all our schools, and this is amazing. You guys are truly amazing individuals who are going to be shaping the lives of the future. You know, having a conversation with many of you, there was one that will be going to NASA. I believe it. And having, hearing that conversation yesterday and hearing the motivation, you guys are super motivated. And that's, I think, what we lack nowadays, is motivation to keep on pushing forward and continue making our community and our society better. And you guys are doing that. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys allowing us the space to come in and talk to you guys about what does it mean to be in the community and what does it mean to serve? So thank you for that. Keep on motivating us. You motivated me. I'm excited. I went back to tell my little nephew, I'm like, if you're not doing something next summer and you're not being civically engaged, you know, we're going to have some issues. But no, but you guys keep on doing it. I'm super proud of you guys, and thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to our next item, or we'll, we'll get our picture first, right? The group picture? All right. So we're going to stand here, and then they're going to come below us, I believe. That's what I was told. So someone's going to figure that out. So we'll all loop here? Long time, he was the, the one behind. Are we all going to fit here? Do we need some up here? Look at Ms. Kristen. She knows how to work the magic of making this happen. Ms. Kristen will help guide you where, because if she can't see you and you can't see her, you're not in the picture.
We'll see you. I'll see you soon.
And we also want to recognize and thank Carlos Garcia for all of your assistance each year making this happen. Thank you. All right, next up is our public comment. And as a reminder for those signed up, we have three minutes. The first one is Rigo Galardo, followed by Mark Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Elk Grove City Council. My name is Rigo Galardo. I am a union carpenter out of Carpenter's Local 46. I stand before you today to address a matter of utmost importance, the need for area labor standards in our community. It is crucial that we prioritize a livable wage, accessible healthcare, and a steadfast commitment to accredited apprenticeship programs. Moreover, it is time we put an end to an unacceptable exploitation of workers by developers who pay substandard wages. Elk Grove is a vibrant and growing community, and it, and its prosperity relies on the hard work and dedication of its residents. We must ensure that those who contribute to our city's progress and fairly, and progress are fairly compensated and treated with dignity. A livable wage is not luxury. It is a fundamental right that allows individuals and families to meet their basic needs and thrive in our society. Healthcare is another critical aspect of supporting our workers. Access to affordable and comprehensive healthcare should not be a privilege reserved for the fortunate, fortunate few. By advocating for healthcare provisions, we can guarantee the well-being of our workforce and safeguard their, their ability to contribute effectively to our community. Equally, important is our commitment to accredited apprenticeship programs. These programs offer invaluable opportunities for skill development and career advancement. By investing in our local talent and providing them with quality training, we not only empower our workers, but also foster a robust and resilient local economy. Apprenticeship programs are a proven escalator to the middle class. Furthermore, we must address the issue of developers exploiting workers by paying them substandard wages. It is morally reprehensible and undermines the principles of fairness and justice for our community, what our community stands for. We cannot allow such practices to persist unchecked. It is imperative that we enact policies and regulations to protect our workers from exploitation and ensure that developers who enter our community adhere to a fair labor practice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mark Graham, followed by Lynn Wheat.
And Mayor, just on the system, there might be a few more speakers up above. I don't know if it scrolls up, but I think we kind of hopped into the mid-order, so. And then Mr. Graham did submit comments to accompany, a visual presentation to accompany his comments, and I'll pull that up here in just a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. Please oppose this bill that's currently in the Senate. It's called AB 965. This is a corporate-sponsored bill for the irresponsible placement of cell antennas. Let me tell you a little bit of the history. Councilmember Sue, and you know this, in 2017, this city opposed SB 649, and in 2021, this city opposed SB 556. Both were bills for the irresponsible placement of cell antennas. Both were, both were vetoed. It needs to be done again on this bill. I was touched by your comments, Councilmember Spees. I'm sorry for your friend's loss, and I agree with everything that you said. I also have to say, I was really moved by the council's response last meeting to the pride presentation. Now, this is the section of the Brown Act that I wish the council would be fully aware of. I wish you would schedule a presentation by the city attorney to explain it to you and how it affects or can affect council meetings. It can. I've got three slides of it, and I'm not going to read it to you. Now, regarding the student, regarding participation in city government, participation in council meetings, Councilmember Sue, and you, you said you were thrilled that the students, you wanted the students to ask questions and be engaged, and, and a number of you said that this class of the Civic Summer, more, sorry, more engaged than the previous classes. Great. Fabulous. Oh, stop. Hold on. Anyway, I can't turn this thing off. Yes, I can. How about doing the same thing for the adults? What's the best way to encourage the adults in this community to ask questions and be engaged in council meetings? As long as we know that it's your priority, as long as we know that it's you want. The way is to make these council meetings interactive. You are authorized, specifically authorized by the Brown Act, the section that I've showed you in email to you, this is the third slide, in seven different ways to respond briefly to questions and comments on items not on the agenda. And yet, it never happens. I've been to, I don't know how many council meetings, and it almost never happens. The council meetings are not interactive, and they're not interactive enough. I'm sorry to say, the council appears basically to be a closed book most of the time. Now, out of a city of 170,000 people, how many people regularly attend council meetings other than those that are, have to be here for a presentation or something? 10? Maybe? I mean, it's not the same 10 people. What do you think? How many? It's not many. If it were 1%, well, it would be, you've got like, less than 1, hundredth of 1% of your population attending council meetings, and I guarantee you, there are more than that who care about what you are doing. And it doesn't matter if you're talking about a new policy or implementing an existing policy. So the consequences of not having interactive council meetings and being a closed book is it deters resident involvement. It deters the adults and the students, I would say, from asking questions and being engaged. The best way you can encourage your constituents to ask questions and be engaged is to respond to questions and comments on items not on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is Kirk Thompson, followed by Bonnie Stensler.
About a month ago, I stood here and told this council that there was pornographic material available in our local public schools, and the school board has done nothing. Madam Mayor, you referred me back to the school board, saying, quote, "City councils don't govern curriculum." There's a few things wrong with that statement. First, as someone who used to be a member of the school board, you referring to books that encourage minors to use sex apps and images like this of sexual interactions, calling that curriculum, I find to be disturbing and disgusting. I'm guessing you don't have young kids in the local public schools anymore if you have that kind of dismissive attitude about this issue. And if you do have kids in school, can you please explain the educational advantages Tinder and Grindr provide to 12-year-olds? Second, the idea that you have no sway over the school board at all is just asinine. Several of the school board members have touted their personal relationship with you on their social media pages. You have either been described by them as a friend or as someone who encouraged them to run for their current office. Madam Mayor, you are a former school board member. You're a current mayor, and you have a close personal relationship with several of the school board members, whether personally, professionally, or politically. I find it very hard to believe you have zero influence over the members of the school board. Someone with your obvious political savviness and talent for interpersonal relationship building, not being able to intervene in this situation, that is one of the most ridiculous ideas I've heard from any politician in the last 10 years, and I watch the State of the Union dress every year. When I was here last month, everyone on this council publicly took turns admonishing Mr. Robles for his DUI, and rightfully so. You all did so because you consider him your friend, and I appreciate that. When a friend falls, you try to lift them back up. Guess what? Your friends on the school board are distributing materials that advises young kids, kids as young as 12 years old, how to sign up for sex apps, and those same materials teach kids how to hide that information from their parents. And you're telling me and all the residents of Elk Grove that you won't do or say anything about it publicly. That's not what leaders do. That's what cowards do. Leaders address the priorities of their constituents, and there is no priority any constituent has that is greater than their children. constituent has that is greater than their children. I've already offered a compromise to the school board because contrary to popular belief, parents like me are not hateful, and we don't want to ban books. For the same reason, though, that we don't want teachers to be able to smoke cigarettes or drink alcohol in our schools, we also don't want teachers handing out porn in our schools. If I believed you had no influence over the school board, which I don't, but even if I did, you still have influence in this community. Do what good leaders do and use it. Use it to do the right thing and help us protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you. And as an order in the room, please, one of the benefits of public comment is people have the right to make a comment. It doesn't make it factually true. Just because you say it doesn't make it true. And that is all that I will say on this subject matter. We will go on to our next speaker, and that is Bonnie Stensler, followed by Bob Turner. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Bonnie Stensler. I frequently attend your council meetings, and I very much appreciate the tireless efforts you put in to making our city the great city it is. And I have to comment, I was very impressed by the students and their demeanor and the way they spoke. I only wish, I hope, I can do as well with my remarks. I'm here tonight as a resident of my Glenbrook Community Association. We have a very diligent neighborhood watch committee, and we're very fortunate to have an excellent relationship with our first responders. To celebrate that relationship, Glenbrook is once again hosting a special event on National Night Out at our lodge. We very much looking forward to the police, firefighters, city manager, Jason, the clerk, staff stopping by to celebrate, and of course, the mayor and the council members. I think the firefighters know our address. If not, 7700 Del Webb Boulevard. We'll be out on the patio. I hope to see you there. Happy Fourth of July, and I hope to see many of you at the Run for Hunger on July 4th at District 56. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Turner, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, council members. I'm Bob Turner. Some of you have known me before, and the reason I'm here this evening is I got your newsletter showing that there's new pavement to make the Laguna Trail cooler. Great. My question is this, when are you going to pave the cemetery parking lot on Elk Grove Boulevard east of Highway 99? It's been a city since 2000 or 2001. Still same gravel during Memorial Day events. Older people like myself, some have wheelchairs, some have canes, some have crutches and everything else. It's very difficult to walk across gravel. If you could set aside and have somebody take a look at it, it would be great, because I'm sure at some time or another, I'm just guessing, somebody's going to fall, and they're going to come to the city council, and they're going to know why. It was never paved. Okay? And it makes no sense of why this has not been completed by now. Thank you very much.
I think probably city staff can probably answer that.
Yeah.
I think I know the answer, but I'm going to let city staff go for it.
Yeah.
So cemetery's not owned, operated, or maintained by the city of Elk Grove. There's a separate cemetery district that is responsible for maintaining that. They have their own elected officials.
All right, who would you contact or whom? I mean, the city has to be there, the county has to be there, probably some farmer smith sitting out in Wilton, some area, may own some of the property too. How can you get people together to get it paved?
It's only owned by the cemetery district. So we could certainly reach out to the cemetery district, let them know about your comments, the desire to have that.
That would be great. Do you have someone I could contact over there myself?
I can get you the contact information.
Sir, if you would leave your information with our city manager, and we will do the requisite follow-up.
Fine. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. All right, next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Estella Drake.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's been several months since I've been here, but of course, I do follow what's going on in Elk Grove, and in particular, our mayor's social media pages. And I just see that as a mayor, you're doing an outstanding job and have really moved us forward with your visionary leadership, considering bringing us a zoo, spending our taxpayer money in that way, the economic incentives that you're putting forth, joining, getting your council members to agree with you so that you're a united front in any position or policy statements that you would choose to make. And I know in attending all those meetings and advocating and being the face of Elk Grove, you've done an excellent job. And I was out shopping, and I came across something, and I just wanted to give it to you as a thank you gift for all your wonderful work, because I imagine by the end of a long day, your feet are very, very tired. So I saw these, and they reminded me of you, and I just thought that they'd be really nice. Now, hopefully, I got the right size. If I didn't, maybe you could consider donating them to Chicks in Crisis or to our food bank. And should you have to declare them on your campaign information, I did leave the price tag on there for you. So again, thank you for your visionary leadership and the work that you're doing to make us in the top 100 livable cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat, and of course, it has red lipstick on it, so I appreciate that. Thank you again. Next up is Estella Drake, followed by Kat Mendoza.
Hope you're okay. See the doctor for the second time tomorrow. Oh, no. I hope he doesn't say surgery. So good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for all you do. And the reason why I'm here is I'm here with Kat because we're going to be talking about all the wonderful things that our volunteer trappers do. And one of the things I want to share is something that was posted from a 501(c) called A Place for Rescue. They, I'm going to read what this was posted. This was posted on June 22nd, and then I'll tell you what's going on. So yesterday, we pulled 15 cats and kittens out of the Elk Grove Animal Shelter. We originally went to pick up Mama Cat from her spay surgery and the vet clinic side, but we couldn't believe what we saw on the shelter side. So many kittens. Elk Grove Shelter has been doing an amazing job helping out the community with cats. So the very least we could do is help them out too. So we pulled some kittens out that are anxiously waiting and ready to be adopted. So out they came. And it was an event time-chasing some of them kittens down, but very glad we could help offload some and make some room for them. As far as the kittens go, well, about half can be viewed in our PetSmart in-store adoption center in Delta Shore Shopping Center, which is the city of Sacramento, District 8. Please go check them out. Please adopt. The rest we have in foster homes getting love and cuddles until fixed and ready to go soon. Thank you, Elk Grove Shelter, and please adopt. Please spay and neuter your pets. And the animals and us all depend on it. And please, we need a second vet, right? We've been asking. Now, I gave you guys a copy of this, so you can see all the kittens. If we play catch-up, that's where we're at right now. There's so many kittens and so many cats. So when a vet goes on vacation, we can't, the cat's not going to say, okay, I'll wait till the vet comes back from vacation, right? It's out of control, not just in Elk Grove, but everywhere. So I really want you guys to please step up and do something. Part-time vet, full-time vet, we've offered to do fundraising, I mean, anything to do to help these animals. They don't have a voice. We have to be the voice for the unspoken. And one of the things that is going to happen at Delta Shores is that we've been contacting the corporate office, because what they're trying to do is, City of Sacramento Front Street wants to move in there and get rid of the nonprofits, which isn't fair. They should work together as a team. And that's what we've been trying to tell you guys, is that the trappers want to work with the city shelter, and the shelters, we've talked to the shelter employees, they want to work with us. But it's crickets. So please, we need to figure this out, and it just shouldn't take this long.
Thank you.
Thank you. And enjoy your little gifts I gave you.
Thank you. Getting two gifts today.
Okay. Oh, kittens are $5 adoption, and if you adopt two, it's $5, because that's how many kittens there are.
Thank you.
So get the word out.
City manager, can you give us an update on when this is coming again? I think you said in August?
In August.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, and it's our final speaker, is Kat Mendoza.
And Ms. Mendoza submitted a visual presentation to accompany her comments, and so we'll pull that up and have that at the ready. I think if you just pull out the tray and the keyboard on the lower right should be the arrow keys, and that should advance you along on the presentation.
Okay. All right, so first off, I just wanted to say thank you for the update in the check-in process. I no longer have to get there at 12 o'clock in the night. So I'm going to do a write-along really quickly. This is picking up and dropping off. Prior to the changes, we would have to get there as early as possible, and I would get there at 6:00, in between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning. CSN pickup is at 4:00, and SPCA, I still have to get there between 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. So a lot of us foster. So a couple of ways that we do it is we trap to foster, we foster for the shelter, or we foster independently when the cats or kittens are turned away, like Estella's doing right now. Either way, we're doing it. A lot of us feed feral cats. I feed in between 34 and about 60 cats, depending on the day of the week. Other items I've listed here are spending. Before you say anything else, I just want to let you know that I know as a city, we can't care for all of the cats that are in Elk Grove, and neither can we, so we really just need more spay and neuter and to hire a second shelter vet. So here is one of our finest colonies of Elk Grove. These are actually three different colonies, and more on the west side of Elk Grove. These are a couple of more colonies. This one's actually by my house, the top left. These are in Old Elk Grove and right across from the shelter. This is actually the first picture there. I believe she caught 26 cats on that property. One of them I foster when the shelter turned her away. And these are a couple of the cats and kittens that I've caught, along with some other people. Here's some more. And so just, we transport, we recover cats, we trap them, we return them, or we rescue them. And here is a kitten who is in the foster program. She's being fostered by one of our members, and she was rescued by a couple of trappers and Taylor Morrison Homes and Tiger Construction when she fell into the storm drain. I won't say anything on that. So here are just a couple of things that people have said that we all, that they also agree, we need more spay and neuter. Telling the shelter, telling rescues to take over and telling people to contact rescues is not working. We have way too many cats. And then these are three that I'm fostering right now. Thank you. Oh, actually, oh, nevermind. I don't have enough time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity at this time, and move on to our next agenda item, which is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Jason Barham, city manager, happy to report on a few items this evening. First of all, Elk Grove's birthday is coming up on July 1st. Will turn 23. We, of course, have been a community since 1850, but we're just incorporated on July 1st, 2000. When I asked the students that question, they all knew it, so you've got some good students over there. Looking forward to celebrating that at our upcoming Salute to the Red, White, and Blue next Tuesday for our Fourth of July celebration. So speaking of the Fourth of July celebration, we've got a lot of things fun in store. So starting at 5:00, the event will open up. Includes Let the Freedom Ride Pedal Parade at 6:00. Opening ceremonies are at 7:00. A free concert starts at 7:30. And then, my opinion, the best fireworks show in the region at 9:40. Mission's free. Parking inside the park is $10. Really just a shout-out to our partners at the CSD, Sky River Casino, and many businesses and staff who make this possible. So a lot of information is available on road closures and other things on our website. The more the details will be released soon. As far as fireworks go, we have a lot of community members always concerned about firework enforcement, those illegal fireworks. And so we're doing our best to continue to expand our efforts to make sure that we're identifying illegal fireworks and issuing citations where we can do that. We have the unmanned aerial teams, or we're going to have drones up. We're going to have our partners at the CSD, police officers, code enforcement, all out looking for that. Members of the public, if they see illegal fireworks, they know of illegal fireworks, they're encouraged to call 916-714-5115 or email fireworks@elkrovpd.org. And they can be anonymous reporting through that. Upcoming event on Friday, July 21st, which is our next Friday in the Grove event, an opportunity for residents to come out to the preserve at District 56 and do some rock painting. So looking forward to that, especially for our younger residents in our community. And then a couple of reminders. First is the youth commission appointments. That deadline is coming up on July 19th. I know we have some of our students out here that are interested in applying for those upcoming positions, so we have four openings on our youth commission, so I'm sure we're going to get lots of applications for that. Also, a call for artists. Elk Grove Arts Commission is seeking an artist or team of artists to paint a mural on the Bond Road Bridge near Elk Grove Floor and Road and Trout Way. It's a commissioned public art project, open to any Sacramento County artist. Proposals must be submitted by Friday, July 28th. And then finally, as a reminder, city council, we do observe a summer recess in July, meaning no meeting, the first meeting in July, so we skipped the July 12th meeting. So the next meeting of the city council following this one will be on Wednesday, July 26th. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right. Thank you for that excellent update. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you. We will move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. I'd like to open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Bye, students. All right, next up, next item, item 8.1.
Item 8.1 is a public hearing to consider resolution approving the report of delinquent public nuisance abatement and sidewalk repair costs and authorizing their collection on the Sacramento County 2023-24 tax roll.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Rosa Tapia, Code Enforcement Manager. Item 8.1 is requesting consideration and adoption of a resolution for a special assessment of delinquent public nuisance abatement and sidewalk repair costs. This item is Code Enforcement and Public Works' annual request to submit a new direct levy to impose special assessments on delinquent parcels for public nuisance abatement and sidewalk repair costs for fiscal year 2324. The California Government Code and the Elk Grove Municipal Code provide authority for code enforcement to impose special assessments on public nuisance abatement performed on privately-owned parcels. Similarly, the Public Works' Operations and Maintenance Division obtains authority from the California Streets and Highway Codes and the Elk Grove Municipal Code to also impose special assessments of delinquent sidewalk repair costs. So public nuisance abatement is specific to the Code Enforcement established process. Staff considers a public nuisance abatement only after a property owner has been notified of the violation and fails to timely file an appeal or bring the property into compliance with the city. with the city's municipal code. The violation identified poses a life and safety concern requiring staff to summarily abate the violation and eliminate the hazard. The property owner is notified of the abatement cost, payment is not received, or fails to timely file an appeal. So for sidewalk repairs, these are costs that are specific for Public Works' O&M established process to ensure timely repairs of public sidewalks. Staff considers a special assessment of sidewalk repairs only after a property owner is notified of the need for sidewalk repairs and fails to respond to notices mailed and posted at their property, or a property owner is notified of the cost of sidewalk repairs performed and does not respond or pay the invoice within the required timeframe. So for fiscal year 2324, staff is requesting consideration to tax roll $2,389.26 in public nuisance abatement costs. These costs are generally associated with Code Enforcement's annual weed abatement work for properties identified as fire hazards. Additionally, staff is requesting a tax roll $6,386.06 in sidewalk repair cost. You will note that this is a slightly different amount than noted in your staff report. The Public Works' Division received payment for three properties with, earlier this week or within this week, which reduced the total requested tax roll amount. This brings the new grand total to $8,690.12 for both Code Enforcement and Public Works. So all properties on the delinquent properties report were notified on May 8th of this evening's meeting date and time. Copies of invoices pertaining to their property were also included in the notification provided. And lastly, the properties on the delinquent report still have until July 21st to make payment to the city before the final report is filed with Sac County, or Sacramento County, in August. Tonight, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the report of delinquent public nuisance abatement and sidewalk repair cost, and request a new direct levy be submitted with Sacramento County for fiscal year 2324. That concludes my presentation. Myself and Deputy Director Sean Gallagher are available for questions.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will go ahead and declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions from colleagues? If not, I will look for a motion.
Mayor, move to adopt the resolution.
Second. But I do want to say, Ms. Tapia, thank you very much. This is always, I'm sure, awkward conversations with people. I'm sure it's never pleasant. They don't know why they have to pay it, or they refuse to pay it. But thank you for doing that. So I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, item 8.2.
An item 8.2 is actually for public hearings to consider the 68th Annexation to Community Facilities District 2003-2 for Police Services, the 91st Annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, the 50th Annexation to Street Maintenance District 1, Zone 3 AM, and the 61st Annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone 2. But I'll let staff elucidate you on the details.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. I'm Renee Tar, Finance Analyst for the City. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. So as you know, the city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure for services. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. And the special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. So tonight, there's only one project. On May 10th, 2023, the City Council adopted resolutions of intent to annex a parcel for the 10069 Elk Grove Floren Road Tentative Parcel Map Project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts: CFD 2003-2 for Public Safety Services, CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, Street Maintenance District 1, Zone 3 for Local Collector and Artillery Street Maintenance, and Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone 2 for Stormwater Drainage and Runoff Maintenance. All of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. So this project is, or consists of two single-family units located southeast of Elk Grove Boulevard and Elk Grove Floren Road. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 68 open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 68 is not closed. And look for a motion A1.
Motion A1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion A2.
Nope. Before that, I need to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Let's tabulate. Of two possible votes, two affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. All right. Now, motion A2.
Motion A2.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion A2.
Nope. Before that, I need to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Let's tabulate. Of two possible votes, two affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right. Motion B2.
Motion B2.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And may I request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Indeed. Of two possible votes, two affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right. Motion B2.
Motion B2.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next one.
Introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only of an ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in Territory Annex to the Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services Annexation Number 91 and Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AM Annex 50 open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up. I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the hearing for SMD 3-AM Annex 50 closed and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of two possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for the property, two affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Look for motion C.
Motion C.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 61 open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 61 is now closed and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And no surprises here. There is no majority protest. Of two possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property, two affirmative votes were returned. Ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Look for motion D.
Motion D.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item, item 9.1.
That'll be to receive information, consider resolution modifying the loan commitment for the proposed Cornerstone Village affordable housing project.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. We are here tonight to talk about Cornerstone Village. This is an 84-unit apartment complex, which contains 53 units of workforce housing, 21 units for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and nine units for people experiencing homelessness. The units come in a range of affordability levels, from units that are affordable for people earning 30% of median income on up to units affordable for people earning 60 to 80% of median income. And the project contains one, two, and three-bedroom units. This project is being developed by the John Stewart Company and was initially proposed as a partnership with Bethesda, now called Ablelight. The project has various amenities, a clubhouse, an outdoor courtyard, universal design elements, laundry facilities, and something that's a little different from what much of our affordable housing has in that this has a full-time resident services coordinator on site. Some of the services that they'll be offering will be targeted to the special populations, particularly the adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This project location is unique because it uses a portion of the Light of the Valley Church property, which would be the first time that a property, a faith-based property, has been subdivided to accommodate an affordable housing project in Elk Grove. So this is along Bruceville Road, south of Laguna Boulevard, and near the middle school, near the Target Shopping Center, and the Laguna Park and Whackford Center. So in December of 2021, some of you may remember, the council approved a loan commitment of $3436,000 for this project. That loan commitment was evidenced by a loan term sheet, which summarized some of the key aspects of the loan, and which is intended to clarify expectations for the developer and for their senior lender on the project. So our key loan terms at that time, we had a loan of about $3.4 million at 4% interest. The term was 55 years. We were getting a payment of 50% of the residual cash flow on the project. The units were to be deed restricted for the same period of 55 years, and we included the requirement to provide the onsite social services coordinator. Since that time, the developer's been pursuing funding for the project, and they've secured some funding. But in May of this year, they proposed some changes to the project. And those changes necessitated re-review of the project and required changes to the loan commitment and the loan term sheet. So we took those to the Affordable Housing Committee, which reviewed the changes on June 13th. And I'll go through quickly what those changes are in four broad categories, the first of which is the partnership changes. The developer asked that Ablelight, one of the original partners, serving as the managing general partner, be allowed to exit the project. Ablelight is exiting their role in this space entirely for some business reasons. So they are no longer serving as a partner on these types of projects. However, they will remain as a consultant due to their depth of knowledge in dealing with adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities. So in Ablelight's place, John Stewart Company is proposing to substitute Pacific Housing as the new managing general partner. Pacific Housing is well-known in our region. They have a Sacramento-based office. They are the managing general partner on five projects in Elk Grove, including many that we've done recently, and have many more statewide. John Stewart Company is also proposing to replace the resident services coordinator role that Ablelight was going to fill with Life Steps. Similar to Pacific Housing, Life Steps has a long role in our community and in the state. They do have several projects where they work with adults with special needs, and we feel confident that they can, that they can serve this project as well. And then the project will continue to work with the Alter Regional Center, which serves people with developmental disabilities, and with Lutheran Social Services, which works with homeless households. So the second major change that the developer proposed was an increase in the loan amount of $2 million, bringing us to a total loan amount of $5,436,000. The basis for this request, they said, they documented that there are some overall cost increases in the project. Interest rates, as you know, have risen significantly since 2001. So that reduces the amount of mortgage debt that the property can carry and also increases the cost of constructing the project. They've also seen big increases in builders' risk insurance and overall in construction costs. So this is intended, the increase in the loan amount would really increase the overall competitiveness for funding, raising the tiebreaker score on a couple of their funding applications, and eliminating the need for state tax credits, which makes the project more likely to be funded. So our Affordable Housing Fund at this point in time has an uncommitted balance of about $7 million. So it could accommodate the increase of $2 million to this project. The developer has also requested a loan commitment extension. So originally, their loan commitment expired in October of this year, and they are asking to extend it by 14 months until the end of 2024. What that would do is allow the project to apply for funding from the multifamily housing program, estate program. This year, they'll submit their application in July. And then next year, once they have that secured, they can go in and apply for tax credit funding in the two rounds that are in 2024. Typically, those are held in February and either June or July. Their purchase and sale agreement with Light of the Valley Church expires in 2024, so they do need to get this project funded, or if they cannot get it funded, then it will not, it will not move forward. So at this point in time, they've secured about $9 million in state and federal funding. So they have a grant from the Federal Home Program of about $7.1 million, and then they have, I believe, about $2 million from the California Department of Developmental Services. The developer's also planning to contribute $4.1 million of their developer fee towards this project. That is the highest percentage commitment of a developer fee that we have seen in the city's history. And then one final minor change that's reflected in the loan term sheet that you see as an attachment to the resolution is changing the unit mix a little bit. They're turning one, one-bedroom unit into a two-bedroom unit. And that allows the project to qualify as a family project for financing, which increases its competitiveness. So in considering the developer's request, staff reviewed it and took information to the Affordable Housing Committee, who reviewed it on June 13th, and recommended that the council approve the modification of the loan commitment to increase the amount, extend the date, and make adjustments to the unit mix. The HCD also indicated support for the new partnerships, but those were not spelled out in the loan commitment and loan term sheet. So we don't have any changes to make there. So tonight, the council has the following options: approving the modifications to the loan commitment, which would allow the developer to submit their funding application in July of this year. The council could request continued negotiations on a loan, on the loan commitment amendment, which we would bring forward at a future date. Or the council could deny the loan commitment modifications, in which case, the existing loan term sheet would stand and would expire in October of this year. I am happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Thank you. Excellent report. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity.
Oh, I should mention, we do have the developer here for any questions as well.
Oh, okay. Wonderful. Would the developer like to say anything before I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Julie Mendel, and I'm representative of Cornerstone Village. As you heard from the comprehensive presentation, Cornerstone Village is a partnership between Light of the Valley Church, the existing property owner. We're bringing in Pacific Housing, which is a nonprofit organization with deep roots here in the Sacramento area, and the John Stewart Company, which I represent, which is a statewide property management and development office. And I don't have much to add, frankly, to Sarah's really comprehensive presentation. Really, with this project, what we've been up against for the last year and a half is really intense competition for state funds. We do have, as the presentation mentioned, we were able to secure an additional $7 million of home funds, which is new since the last time this project was before you. And that does make us more competitive for this upcoming round of HCD funds. And we're encouraged by some other policy and development office. And I don't have much to add, frankly, to Sarah's really comprehensive presentation. Really, with this project, what we've been up against for the last year and a half is really intense competition for state funds. We do have, as the presentation mentioned, we were able to secure an additional $7 million of home funds, which is new since the last time this project was before you. And that does make us more competitive for this upcoming round of HCD funds. And we're encouraged by some other policy changes, frankly, that we've seen from HCD that make us think our project will score more. We did apply last year, and we were not successful. And so we're going again for this round that's due two weeks from now. So we think that we, they've changed the scoring a little bit. So we think we'll be more competitive. And we've also put a lot of thought into our tiebreaker analysis and how we can really juice that. And that's what's led to the request for an additional commitment that's before you today. So I'm here to answer any questions. I did also want to flag, you heard a public comment earlier about, from a carpenter, about paying fair wages. I want to highlight that this project does anticipate paying prevailing wage. It's a requirement of other federal funds on this. Our loan term sheet with the city does also require us to competitively bid and then also advertise construction opportunities with, I think, the Sacramento Builders Exchange and then any Sacramento County area, like local business, union, you know, minority-owned business, that sort of thing. So we're more than happy to work towards that and make sure that the city funds, you know, lift all boats. So here to answer any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for that additional information as well. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity. And would love to hear from our Affordable Housing Committee members. And feel free to.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Sarah and Julie for being here and for the added information. This project is unique in many different ways, some of which was highlighted by Ms. Mendel about the paying prevailing wage. It serves a unique demographic, our developmentally disabled adults, which, as we all know, we have Jesse Baker Schools, a presence, and those kids will grow up one day and will need a place to live. So I think this serves a unique population. The deep affordability that it provides. You know, in general, I mean, I don't like the city having to put out more funds for any type of project simply because we always have a limit of resources and we can service more if we can spread it around. But for these unique circumstances, I think it's worth it. We've committed to this project already previously. And the inflationary realm is something everybody's familiar with. And again, the uniqueness of the project that it serves. And then I also want to thank you, Julie, Ms. Mendel. Am I saying your last name correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. For the outreach that you did to the neighborhood nearby. It's important, I think, that our existing community knows what will be coming near them, any project. And that you guys reached out additionally is, to me, I greatly appreciate. And just to highlight the challenges of, you know, you mentioned you competed for funds last year and weren't successful. I just, if folks didn't get a chance to look at the site, obviously, my council members did, but I'm just for the public. Look at the proximity of this site. It's across the street from a middle school. It's just down the street from shopping centers. You know, the Target Shopping Center, restaurants nearby, bus stop runs right by there on Bruceville. And they still were not able to be successful. That's how tough it is to get these funds. So, you know, again, the increase in funding that's requested is not something I normally would like. But through all the different circumstances, I highlighted the uniqueness of the project. I wholeheartedly support this. So thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, please.
Affordable Housing? Well, we can go down.
Affordable Housing.
We'll just go down the line.
Okay. We're just going to go down the line. So I appreciate what Councilmember Soon had to say, particularly relatively to the to the very special population that it serves, right? This is, this makes it very unique for Elk Grove. Inflationary pressures are obvious to everyone. I think everybody's feeling it. So, I mean, it makes sense. It's unfortunate, but that's unfortunately what it is, right? Other than that, I'm happy to support the project.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
No, I appreciate the analysis and the presentation that has been given to us tonight. Looking at the uniqueness of Cornerstone Village, as we break it down, eighty-four units, twenty-one units for adults with intellectual or developmental disabilities, nine units of permanent supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness, fifty-three units of family housing. That's a good mixed-house project. And this project has been around for a couple of years, part of a larger collective of what we want to see here in town, but part of a bigger picture that we would like to see with neighborhoods here in Elk Grove, to create that diversity of housing. So people feel like they belong in the neighborhoods they live in, whether they're middle class, upper-middle class. They have a sense of belonging, especially when you have affordable housing mixed in with it. And so I'm fully in support of it. I'm fully in support of it. I mean, I had some questions before, but it was to wrap my head around the operational costs, how all that plays into the bigger picture. But this makes perfect sense. And I have full faith that this will be a well-successed project as we move forward. And I want to thank you for keep working with the city on this.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Sarah, and thank you for presenting as well. I'm pretty excited about this because for me, it was a unique opportunity to see a faith-based organization allow their space to be utilized and to continue to build and develop on there. You don't see that that often, especially around the region. So I think that's a very unique opportunity. I understand the way that with the rates and everything going up, and I can fully support this project and look forward to even hearing more about some of the bids that will be going out and the prevailing wage that will also be happening. So thank you.
Thank you for all of your comments to my colleagues. I too am in support of this project. I think it's a great project, the partnership with the faith-based community, the outreach you've done with the neighbors. This is how you do a project right. You bring the stakeholders along on this journey. And so I commend everyone that was a part of the process. No NIMBYism. This is, it's a great location. It's near all of those services and amenities, which makes a big difference. But just that outreach makes a huge difference as part of the decision-making. And I think what's compelling is, you know, a lot of the comments shared by my colleague, Assembly, or Assembly member. Yeah. Councilmember Darren Soon, he is going to go work for the Assembly, so maybe that's what's in my head, is, you know, that this is a unique opportunity to help. It's a project that we need. And most importantly, our Affordable Housing Fund has the adequate fund balance to pay for this, which is what it's there for. So thank you for this. And the reality of the costs that are out there, they're out there, and we all definitely know. So thank you, and so I'm looking for a motion now.
I will move staff's recommendation happily.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next item.
Takes us on to item nine point two, which is to receive information, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a security agreement and numerous related documents associated with the city's guarantee of financing for the Slow &amp; Low Restaurant Project located at 9700 Railroad Street.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Daryl Doan, your Economic Development Director. We have another loan item in front of you tonight. So this item is a security agreement and numerous other related documents that I won't list related to something called the Slow &amp; Low Restaurant Project. Before I go any further, I want to stop and introduce two people. I have Michael Hargis and his wife Carrie, who are the proprietors of the Slow &amp; Low Restaurant Project. And then we have Donna Sutherland from River City Bank. You're going to learn about them in a minute when I go through this. So the recommended action is to guarantee and secure a loan between River City Bank and Slow &amp; Low LLC, aka Mr. Hargis, to finance completion and opening of the Slow &amp; Low Restaurant Project at 9700 Railroad Street in historic downtown Elk Grove. So by way of background, I know you've all heard this, but maybe members of the public haven't. This is part of the Railroad Street Redevelopment Project. That was a city-initiated project. We initiated that, actually, council initiated that when you authorized the purchase of 9676 Railroad Street. So that's the old, broken-down, red brick building that is now Dust Bowl. In October of 2017, we took title of that property. It's about 1.75 acres. The Dust Bowl building is about 5,000 square feet. The purpose was, of course, to partner with the developer to redevelop that and adjacent city-owned property. In October of 2020, the city sold 9676 Railroad Street to DNS Development. They are the developers of all of the Railroad Street Redevelopment Project. Shortly after that sale, DNS purchased 9699 Railroad Street. I'm realizing right now I really should have a map, and I apologize. But if you can imagine where Dust Bowl is, 9699 is the next previously broken-down, brick, historic building to the south that we colloquially call the Whiting Building. That is a 0.9-acre property. It is 6,500 square feet. More background. So the Railroad Street Redevelopment Project, what is it? It is a city-initiated redevelopment of about five or so acres at Railroad Street and Elk Grove Boulevard. Phase one was Dust Bowl. That is done and complete, thanks to DNS and to that restaurateur. Phase two is the redevelopment of 9700 Railroad Street. That is to be the Slow &amp; Low Restaurant, which is the purpose of this item here tonight. That is under construction and nearing completion. Phase three is what's called Railroad Courtyards. That are, those are the apartments that are going up between Dust Bowl and Slow &amp; Low. Those are thirty-four, two-to-three-story urban bungalows in seventeen duplex buildings. Those are under construction and will be completed and ready for occupancy, I would estimate, later this year. That is really the city's first, that I can think of, example of true urban-style housing, right? Those are stacked flats, live-work, very urban-style of construction. So very excited about that. Total investment in the Railroad Street Project is $24 million. On top of all that, $24 million of private work, the city did about $12 million of public work. We built Old Town Plaza. We reconstructed Railroad Street and made that beautiful. And then we put in about 200 public parking spaces, both in two lots and on-street parking. And all of that work is complete. So we are rapidly nearing completion of this project. So let me tell you about Slow &amp; Low, which is the purpose of the item tonight. So this is the renovation of 9700 Railroad Street, the Whiting Building. DNS has completed structural and shell improvements on that project. The restaurant improvements are under construction now on the interior, so tenant improvements. They are being completed by Slow &amp; Low. Slow &amp; Low LLC, that is the entity that is developing and will operate the Slow &amp; Low Restaurant Project. It is an entity of restaurateur, hospitality veteran, all-around certified, good restaurateur, Michael Hargis. He owns and operates Lowbrow Beer Hall in Midtown. I'm sure every single one of you has been there. It was part of the catalyst, I think, for the restaurant scene in Midtown. Also, Beast &amp; Bounty at Ice Blocks near our street, another amazing restaurant. You should all go there. And then Milk Money, which is probably my favorite of the three I'm listing because it is, you know, fancy donuts. I took my kids there once, looking for unfancy donuts, and we went somewhere else because the donuts were too fancy for my children. It's amazing. Get there early because they sell out every morning. So Slow &amp; Low, the concept is a local chef-driven barbecue restaurant, full bar, indoor and outdoor seated service, brunch, lunch, and dinner. Barbecue doesn't do it justice. It is slow-smoked meats in a $30,000 smoker that Mr. Hargis has procured just for this project. And amazing craft cocktails, because that is also what they are known for. The chef is Brock McDonald, who is amazing. This is exactly the kind of project we wanted in Old Town when we initiated the Railroad Street Project. So there's about $1.2 million going into the restaurant improvement alone. That is improvements alone. That is separate from what DNS did to the structure. $700,000 of that has been put into the project as cash to date by Mr. Hargis and his entity. The other $500,000 will come, if you approve this item tonight, in the form of a loan commitment from River City Bank, which will fund the balance of the project to complete the tenant improvements and capitalize opening and initial operations. That loan commitment from River City Bank is contingent on the city providing a guarantee. And that is the request of you tonight with this item. So how would that guarantee structure work? There's three parts to this. There's a business loan agreement and promissory note. That's between River City Bank and Slow &amp; Low LLC. The city is not a party to the loan. The loan amount is $500,000. The interest rate is 4.75%. It is for a five-year term. It is a fully amortizing loan, meaning by the end of the five-year term, it will be paid off. And again, the city is not a party to the loan, and we will have no repayment obligations under that loan. The second part of the loan guarantee is something called an assignment of deposit account agreement and then related loan documents that are enumerated in your staff report, some of which we are signatory to, some of which we are not. So those agreements are between River City Bank and the city. So under that, under those agreements, So under that, under those agreements, the city will guarantee Slow and Low's repayment obligations of the loan with River City Bank by creating a $500,000 pledged collateral deposit. So what that means is, we already have 20.8 million dollars approximately on deposit at River City Bank. As you know, we are big supporters of local banking and our audit policy in this council has in the past directed staff to deposit significant sums with small and regional local banks as a way to support the regional economy. And so we already have significant money on account there. So we will take $500,000 of the money that we have on account and we will put it into a separate certificate of deposit and that CD will be pledged as security against Mr. Hargis's loan with River City Bank. We will continue to earn interest on that deposit. But we cannot draw the funds so long as the loan is outstanding and we are securing that loan with our $500,000. That money has to sit on deposit, earning interest. In the event that something went really wrong with this deal and Mr. Hargis defaulted on his loan, the bank could keep some or all of that money as repayment. That's the nature of the guarantee. The third item is a security agreement. So we need to secure our security to the bank. And the way we do that is through a security agreement with Mr. Hargis and the Slow and Low LLC entity. And the way we, the, the assets that would secure our security under this security agreement, I'm saying security a lot, I realize that, are two things. A deed of trust on real property that Mr. Hargis owns, personal property, valued at approximately $400,000. And then a lien on the restaurant equipment in the Slow and Low property that was recently installed at a price of $200,000 that we are then valuing at $100,000 because if we ever had to foreclose that lien, of course, the equipment would be used. So we discounted the value by 50%. And the loan, the security agreement also stipulates that the loan funds that Mr. Hargis will receive from River City Bank can only be used on project costs. So this creates a couple of scenarios, right? But by the nature of a loan guarantee, our capital is at risk. So I want to be transparent with the public and you about what could happen. In the best case scenario, the project would be completed on schedule by Mr. Hargis using those River City Bank loan funds. It would be opened. It would be successful. That would result in Mr. Hargis paying off that loan at some point within that five year loan term. And then our pledged collateral deposit would be released and we would experience no loss. We would have, and during that time, we would have earned the same interest on that deposit as we would have had we not created this security arrangement. So the other scenario is a default scenario. That's the bad scenario. So we don't expect this, but it's feasible, it's possible. The project could be completed with the River City Bank loan funds. It could be opened and then it could fail. Could fail immediately, it could fail over a period of months, it could just not catch on. That could result in Mr. Hargis defaulting on the loan. And if that were to happen, the bank could then, they would have the right to keep some or all of the city's $500,000 pledged deposit. Again, worst case scenario, nuclear scenario. I don't expect that to happen, but I can't guarantee that it won't. So full transparency on that. If that worst case scenario did happen and the bank has kept our money, then we would have some options because we have the security agreement. We have that first deed of trust in Mr. Hargis's personal property. And we also have the lien on the restaurant equipment. We could foreclose both of those interests. Take, in theory, take title to his personal property, take title to the restaurant equipment. Those assets are valued at $500,000, which is roughly equivalent to, they are roughly valued at $500,000, which is exactly equivalent to our pledged security deposit. In that case, the city would own that property and that equipment. We could hold it or we could sell it, attempt to sell it to recoup some or all of our loss. In reality, we wouldn't remove restaurant equipment. I don't know what we would do with that. I think the chief would probably like the smoker, but we would probably keep the restaurant equipment there. And, you know, if this worst case scenario happened, we would be out $500,000, but the equipment would still be in place and we would have a great restaurant space that would be ready for a replacement tenant. We could sell that equipment to that replacement tenant. So that's the good and the bad. Next steps, we recommend obviously approval of the resolution tonight, which create this security transaction. If you approve this, then we will open an escrow. Because of the private property deed involved, we need to use traditional escrow and, and title to close this. We would perfect that deed of trust, meaning make sure that it has clean title and that our deed would be put in first position on that title. And then we would also perfect the equipment lien. We would then close escrow. The bank would disperse the loan funds. Mr. Hargis would open his restaurant this summer and we would all go eat smoked meats. There is also a vegetarian option too. For you, Mayor. So this is not a, a project under CEQA that is subject to review, so it is exempt from CEQA. And of course, I've covered the fiscal impact, but really it's, you know, $500,000 already on deposit at River City Bank will be tied up and put at risk. But there's no new outlay of capital required. And of course, there's the potential loss or some, of some or all of that security deposit. And then inability to recoup via security assets. Again, we don't think that's going to happen. We think those security assets have value and we could recoup some of that. You have alternatives, as always. You could not approve the resolution, which is fine. That means the loan would not be made. And Mr. Hargis would likely be unable to finish the restaurant project. You could direct staff to negotiate alternative terms, but we recommend approval. In closing, I just want to make a couple notes. One is, we've done this before, a very similar transaction two years ago, where we backed a loan from F and M Bank, Farmers and Merchants Bank, another one of our local lending banking friends. That was a one and a half million dollar line of credit that DNS used to complete the Dust Bowl space. Now that, that was a backing of a developer loan for shell construction. This is the backer of a tenant loan for tenant improvement construction. So they are different, but this is a tool that we have in our toolbox and we've used it before. So approving this would not be precedent setting for what that's worth. I would also add, we don't do this very often. We don't take it lightly. We don't intend to do it very often. But in this case, because we initiated this project and we have already invested heavily in it, I think our investment would be diminished if we didn't do this. And the final thing, well, two more things I'd like to add. One is that this is our local lending policy in action. It is working, right? The, the deal there was, we would move a portion of our cash on hand out of large national banks and at a greater risk, frankly, deposit them in local and regional banks. And the exchange was supposed to be that when we needed help, we would go to our local banking friends and they would help us deploy capital in our community. And so that has happened twice now because of that policy. So kudos to the council and the audit committee for establishing that. I think it's a really great thing. And then finally, I'd just like to thank River City Bank. They are one of those people. And Donna is here tonight. Donna is here if you have any questions of her and Mr. Hargis and his wife are here, if you have any questions of them. And I'm available for questions and direction.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Would the, with Mr. Hargis or River City, would you like to speak before I open it up for public comment?
Hello. Definitely wasn't prepared to speak today, but.
You don't have to. I mean, it's optional.
I, I wanted to, so. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Jason, thank you. And Daryl, thank you. Where'd you go? Right over there. Okay, thank you. I'm not going to let that happen. I'm not going to let it go into default. Survived COVID with my other restaurants. Lowbrow's been open for 10 years. We're very passionate about what we do. We're going to bring a high caliber level of restaurant, community, food, bar. It's going to be incredible and I appreciate you all just hearing us out on this and, and, and just listening to this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would just like to say as a representative for River City Bank that we are very, very appreciative of the relationship and partnership that we have with the city of Elk Grove. Being that we are a locally headquartered bank right in Sacramento, our goal is to help our local communities continue to grow. And we were able to work with Mr. Doan and the city to find a solution that would help infuse this cash to bring this restaurant to fruition and complete this project. And we're really proud of that and we really hope that you will approve this this evening because we have faith in the project and we also have faith in the partnership with the city.
So thank you. Thank you and thank you for being here.
You bet.
Thank you. All right, I will open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this. I'll close the public comment opportunity and then open it up for council comments, questions. I'll, yeah, you want to start?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thank you so much. I, I have a few things. First, I, I want to thank Daryl for, Mr. Doan for his presentation as well as very informative. Donna from River City Bank, thank you for being here and your faith in the community. You, local banking makes small businesses go around, so we really appreciate your commitment to the community. And Mr. Hargis as well, thank you for your commitment to the community. And this, congratulations on the successes that you've already had so, had so far. I do have a question for you however, if you wouldn't mind coming up. So, you know, because we're, we're talking about the city, we're not, the city is outlaying capital, but, you know, we're asked to secure this loan. I was wondering if you could maybe explain your vision, how this Slow and Low would differ, provide a different experience and dining, dining experience from Dickies or McHugh's?
Yeah. I think one thing, you know, we talked about our restaurant, Beast and Bounty. Our executive chef, Brock McDonald, is our chef of all of our restaurants. Beast and Bounty is actually a Michelin rated restaurant. So our food is internationally acclaimed. And so the, the kind of thing that we're doing is, is really a chef driven style of barbecue. We've been digging in, we've traveled all over. We spent time in Memphis and I can tell you of all the 23 places we went to while we were in Memphis, we're better than them. We're going to have just an exceptional quality of food. My other restaurants too, we excel, like Daryl said, in craft cocktails. We're going to have a full bar, we're going to have a great beer program. We promise to not be too competitive with Dust Bowl, but we do plan on moving a lot of beer. We are going to have great cocktails, a huge space. It's a 6,500 foot space, 2,400 foot patio. You know, we do a lot of other things at our restaurants with music and entertainment. We plan on bringing a lot of those things to the city as well, which we can use those things to, to drive the economics of the restaurant. And in fact, right now, we're working on an event with Daryl and some other people with, I'm sure you guys know who Diplo is. We're, we're working on bringing Diplo to Elk Grove. And that's just one of the things I'm committed to do is not just the restaurant and bringing community and culture and food and raising the caliber, but bringing a lot of things around that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that information. And then, actually, I have a question for Mr. Doan too. You know, this, and, and I'll, well, I guess what I, what I'm trying to say is, there's other businesses around our city as well, right? And I think this type of incentives would, would benefit others in our community. And I think we have something that we're in the works as well.
Yeah, we do. I'm glad you mentioned that because I forgot to mention it. Proud of you, councilman. Yeah, so we don't want to pick winners and losers when it comes to restaurants. We want high quality restaurant experiences and it's one of our key economic development goals is to elevate the quality of amenities in the city. And so we are working on a program that is part of the Measure E budget that you've already seen. It's called the Brew Program, which is short for brewery, winery, and I can't think right now, brewery, winery.
Restaurants?
And restaurant programs.
All of us are up here muttering restaurants.
It's not even close to 10 o'clock yet and I can't think. Yeah, so we call it the Brew Program. And what that program will do is it will create a grant program so that any new or expanding restaurant that kind of, not a chain restaurant, not a, not a national chain, but something that is chef driven, fresh, local, regional, there will be grant funds available for tenant improvements, for equipment purchases, for operating capital and for some construction activities like outdoor patio spaces. So we hope to bring that back to you the second meeting in July, ideally maybe the first meeting in August, and, and seek your approval on that. And that will provide grants. We haven't kind of zeroed in on the money amount yet, but somewhere between 50 and $100,000. So if you are an existing restaurant and you're looking to expand by building a great patio space, we'll have funds available to help pay for that, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So that concept, the fact that we're, we're not trying to pick winners and losers here in the, in the sense that we're going to be having something for all our existing businesses, that, that matters a great deal to me. And then the final thing I would say is, you know, being part of that decision in 2017, that, that idea, that vision of revitalizing Old Town, Old Town, having this project serve as a catalyst. That's 2017, 20, a year later, you know, up to that point, we didn't know if we were going to get that partner. And we did, we found that partner in DNS Development and they, they've been successful. And now, you know, they brought to us Slow and Low. And so I see this as our commitment in, in this creative public private partnership, which to me also proves the innovation of, of the city, staff and, and my council colleagues on here about really trying to provide senses of place within our community and these different experiences for folks to enjoy themselves. And so again, completing that vision that, that we started a few years back, I'm, I'm in full support of, of this, this, this security that, that we're considering tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. So first thing I want to do, Mr. Doan, is thank you for full, open, transparent conversation about the benefits and potential drawbacks, right? We don't want any footnotes. We don't want anything hidden away somewhere. We don't want any asterisks. And you, you clearly elaborated that and, and I appreciate that because any business decision should, should be based upon not just what the upside is, but what the downside is as well. So I thank you very much for doing that. I think our, our residents deserve that. Next, I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Hargis. You've, you've put in, you're putting your personal assets on the line as well in this. And I'm going to save everybody my chicken and pig joke. I think, I might have told it before, but. Did I tell it here? Okay. But it's, it's, it's about, it's about being interested and, and the difference between being interested and being committed, right? I notice and I appreciate that they've already invested a significant amount of money into this. They are committed to it. It isn't just somebody who came in with, hey, here's a great idea, let's go do this, right? They, they believe in it because they put their money in. So given, you know, the past successes of Mr. and Mrs. Hargis, the commitment that they have shown through their own personal finance and putting their own personal assets up, I think this is open, straightforward and I think it's, it's definitely, or I know it's something that we can definitely support. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brewer?
Public private partnerships come in a myriad of ways. This is one of many examples, especially when you have one party who's putting full skin in the game as the Hargises. And I appreciate your dedication and investment in Elk Grove to, to that extent. But also it shows the type of, of couple you are in putting your all into your businesses. And all of your, all of your Sacramento restaurants, Lowbrow, been a long time supporter of that. Milk Money, as you already know, I'm a frequent there every, every other week. Beast and Bounty, I love that restaurant. And I had no idea that, that, that Brock was a Michelin star chef. And he's going to be the head chef over at Slow and Low, which really says a lot. And if people are listening, please spread the word because this is an experience. I mean, all of our barbecue restaurants are great, but I think what Slow and Low is offering is an experience. And that's something that people should really pay close attention to. I want to thank River City Bank for, for being a part of this security agreement because it shows your commitment to communities. And being a community bank is vital to, to, to walk the walk. And I, and I definitely appreciate that. And Mr. Doan, I, I really liked this, your analysis, the way you laid it out. Transparency and openness is definitely a coin of the realm on this one. And I'm glad, I'm very glad that you were honest to a fault on this because it shows how this is all going to come together and everyone's committed. And as long, and to the extent that we continue to stay committed and moving this ball forward, I think the brewery, restaurant, winery program, affectionately named Brew, is, I'm going to carry out and it's going to be successful because as we start the work on what I call the Main Street Initiative that will reimagine Old Town for the better, bring more people and bring more foot power in there. And as we see more breweries and restaurants and original retailers come into Elk Grove and want to be a part of what we're doing in the historic district slash Old Town, that's going to really make, make for, for, for interesting entertainment and, and a destination place, not only for the weekends but for weekdays. And I'm really excited about all this because there's, there's something to be said about being true to your word and wanting to turn the prospects of, of Historic District around. And I thank previous city councils for keeping their eye on the ball and working closely with you to making sure that is being come to fruition. So thank you very much. This is good stuff.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Daryl, thank you for the presentation. Truly appreciate it. Thank you to Donna for being here and being a community partner. Thank you for Mr. Hargis for showing the amazing things that you're doing in our community. As someone who has had the duck fries from Lowbrow, which are pretty famous there, and as someone who has celebrated birthdays with friends at Beast and Bounty with the tomahawk steak, the food is excellent. And one of the things that you said and also that Councilman Zouin said is the experience, your restaurants are always packed on the weekends because of the experience that you provide there. And I'm excited for this because I think that Elk Grove is in dire need of experience, especially instead of driving down to Sacramento or going to Roseville, people will stay here locally in Elk Grove. And this is where taxes and, and funding will come from because of this restaurant and several other restaurants that will be coming into our city because of this. It takes one to lead the charge. We've seen it at Piglet and I'm pretty sure we're going to see it at your restaurant. Thank you to the city staff for stepping away from national banks and putting it into community banks. That's something that shows that we are working diligently with our community partners and that's something that we want to continue to aspire and continue to do. You know, Councilman Brewer, you are going to get an amazing, this is all Elk Grove, but again, I guess it's all Elk Grove, Darren. Councilman Zouin, I know, but Councilman Brewer, Brewer, this is something that's going to be amazing for, for your district. I can already see young professionals even trying to move into the bungalow apartments or complexes. And I can see them also going there and utilizing a lot of these spaces, going to brunches and having, having a place to eat. And I said this last time, that there was somebody who tagged one of the restaurants and said, the newest restaurants in Elk Grove and it was, or in Sacramento, and it was actually Elk Grove. I'm pretty sure that's going to happen again and they're going to say Sacramento, but it's Elk Grove. So Elk Grove, you know, I'm excited for what's going to be happening. And again, this is the first of many that are going to be coming, but you're definitely setting the foundation. So thank you and full support.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues. Excellent points brought up by all of you. Revitalizing Old Town has been a priority for this council, previous councils, and having strong anchors is what makes that vision realized. having strong anchors is what makes that vision realized. We've done it with our Old Town Plaza, with Dust Bowl, and now you're seeing all of the great things coming in Old Town. And I said in the last meeting, the potential of becoming sort of that regional historical gas lamp-type district. We are on that pathway because of just all of the excitement and the investment that is happening. And so, you know, I had a great opportunity to tour the site before my State of the City address and got to capture some of those moments in there. We're very proud of the work that you're doing and the work that you've already done in Sacramento. And I, too, am a big fan of your restaurants and have been there on numerous occasions, although I'd like to invest as much right here in our hometown. And so, I'm so pleased to see that you have vegetarian options for myself. As you know that I'm a vegetarian, and you shared with me some of your vision and some of the food that you do have for all palates, and that's really quite remarkable. But this is, you know, going back to that public-private partnership that was raised by my colleague, but it speaks volumes to have River City here as well, that this is a community effort and that all parties here believe in this project. And this reinforces our destination and our belief that Old Town is a destination. It's part of our travel and tourism, historical part of our community. And to see that really fully imagined, this plays a key role in seeing that vision realized. So, I, too, am in support as well, and thank you all for being here. So, with that, I will look for a motion.
I still moved?
Seconds.
Moved by Councilmember Brewer. A project that will benefit the entire city, not just his district.
Right.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. And I do want to thank Mr. Doan for all of your work, and particularly providing the transparency of how this all works because it is very important to see how those numbers work, and that you're willing to leverage your personal assets in this. Speaks volumes to your commitment to the project. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is council comments, reports, and future agenda items. To my right, anything to report, Councilmember Robles?
Nothing to report, just looking forward for the Fourth of July and for the run. I'll be running and competing against Councilman Suon, I think.
Excellent. Councilmember Brewer?
I think I'll be doing the virtual part, guys. I'm sorry. Sacramento Metro Cable Commission is meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM at the county supervisor chambers. And so, we meet every quarter. And so, this will be, as is being the second quarter, we had an organizational meeting in the first quarter, but we didn't have a full attendance. Our next meeting tomorrow, I will definitely be there, and we'll have a fun exchange about what we're doing in the region.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Spies?
I will see Councilmember Brewer at that Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. My gosh, it's a long one. And then, after that, I will be enjoying the very long break that we will have until July 26. And so, I just hope that everybody can enjoy their break in terms of not having council meetings until then, and everybody stays safe, and that my hope is, and we didn't have any questions about, you know what? I'm going to ask a question. That way, they can put it out. That way, they can put it out there. Fireworks for this coming, this coming week. We've seen some Facebook posts, but can we have just, did we talk about it in council, excuse me, in the general notes?
Yes.
We did? Well, then, I missed that part. But anyway, please stay safe. And for those of you who are using illegal fireworks, don't. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Suon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, we had our SAICOG blueprint, the first one. That first workshop was well-attended in Fall Sum. I was down in Pomona for the League of Cities Housing and Economic Development Committee meeting with Councilmember Brewer, who's there on, yeah, but you were also on the Environmental Committee, weren't you?
Yes, I was on the Environmental Quality Policy Committee and also the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Yeah.
But in my, but in my business capacity.
Ah, that's right. Okay. It was a pleasant surprise to see you in the airport at 6:00 in the morning, by the way. Barbecue on the Beat, which I think saw most of us there. That was a great turnout for that first one over at Johnson Park. Chief, as always, cooks up some meat and barbecue along with Deputy Chief here, Solomon. So, thank you all for doing that, and Jason Jimenez, many folks there volunteering. And then, well, that's it. We have a SAICOG Race Equity Inclusion Committee meeting tomorrow. That's it. Thank you.
I forgot to mention that there's a new gym that just opened up, Nass Fitness, which is on White Lock and Parkway. It's a really cool business, so check it out and look at the website for more information on there.
All right. Thank you. I will waive my report and just wish everyone is safe and happy Fourth of July. And thank you to our police department and our fire department for all the extra work that they will be doing, keeping our community safe. I went on a ride-along a few years back with our fire chief, and the amount of fires that are caused by illegal fireworks is frightening. And so, if you see something, please say something. And then, I'll turn it over to our vice mayor, who would like to adjourn in someone's memory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for offering me the opportunity because I forgot to ask about it. But earlier, I mentioned a friend's son, his name is Kalen. I'm going to save the family name because I don't, I don't know how public they've made it. But my friend and I went to high school together, so it's been, ooh, a really long time that we've been friends. But last Thursday, his son was shot. It was last Thursday near La Mancha and Sheldon Park, which is actually South Sacramento, and 28 years old. And I guess the lesson from it is, I mean, there's a lot of lessons from it, but one thing that we can all know, or we should all get from it, is to certainly, when you see, or when you leave a loved one, make sure that they understand that you love them because it's not guaranteed that you're going to see them the next day or the next time, and you would want them to remember or to know that you loved them. And so, for my friend who, you know, wakes up at 2:00 in the morning thinking about the loss, right, to him, close in Kalen's memory. So, thank you.
Thank you, and may his memory be a blessing to his family and everyone that knew him. Thank you. Be safe, everyone. With that, we will adjourn at 8:03. Thank you.